All this meeting of the academic committee to order, it is a remote, remote conferencing meeting and the meeting is being live streamed by the county channel. At this time, I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, prior to the approval of the agenda, I have a couple corrections to the agenda, a couple deletions and a change of order. I need to delete the November 3rd minutes because they were not completed. So we'll delete those. And I'd like to delete 12.4, OE 12.4, because that is pretty statistic laden and Dr. Stratos is working on getting those statistics. And I'd like to move 12.8 to the beginning of the agenda. So those are making three changes. So if you, if someone moves to approve the agendas with those three changes. One is deleting the November 3rd minutes. Two is deleting presentation of OE 12.4. And the third thing is moving the presentation of 12.8 to be the first item on our agenda. Okay? So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
Yeah, so move.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Angela. And now, any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Three oh. So the next thing on our agenda, public comments. Robin, are there any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then the next thing on our agenda is approval of the September 29th minutes. Do I have a motion addressing those?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the September 29th agenda.
Min- minutes.
I mean, just me- meeting minutes, I'm sorry.
Meeting minutes.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, at this point, please signify by saying aye if you approve those meeting minutes. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three zero. Alright, so that moves us right into our first item agenda. And we recall, I did make a mo- I did change the order. So we are going to start with 12.8. And that OE is under the instructional. And it reads, ensure that all instructional programs, including both content and practices, are regularly evaluated and modified to ensure their continuing effectiveness. And Dr. Stratos, I think you have a team here with you today. Welcome. If you want to take, take that one and run with it.
Appreciate it. Mrs. Robine, Mr. Campbell, and Mrs. Middleton, thank you for your time and this opportunity of sharing information from myself and our team. I'd like you to recognize also that we have membership on iPhone who, so if there's any specific questions within this operational expectation for Melissa Murray or for Ashley Hutchinson, they are driving back in from a meeting and they attended at Columbia today. So with that, I thank you again for the op- this opportunity and allowing me to have the team up early. If we look at the OE, obviously, the first page is our signature page. Page two, thank you, Mrs. Cushionberry. Page two starts with information regarding the superintendent's interpretation. It has a statement of compliance. Indicators of compliance are identified. They're in bulleted format. As we go to page three, we note that we have administrative regulations. They did start on the prior page. These ARs are in support of this operational expectation of 12.8 of program evaluations. And there are diverse group of regulations that meet this requirement from human resources and instructional services. Human resource perspective is that as an educator, we will support instructional initiatives. And from IS, the instructional service are those that construct and provide avenues for instruction. Also on page three, we notice on the bottom, I want us to note that our instructional practices are tied very closely to Beaufort County School District Board of Education core beliefs. With that, we align our district strategic plan. And you'll see, you'll hear a little more in the process of the monitoring of both the strategic plan and school renewal plan within this operational expectation. Page four provides evidence supporting our process of the strategic plan, reviewing of it, as well as our school renewal plans. You could tell we've already started this process. We will now have in December 8th, actually, a workshop with principals regarding our strategic plan mid-year review, which is part, one part of a three-part series. First with principals, then we go work with educators, and then we work with public. Those dates will be forthcoming. If we go to page four, continues with providing information on the process that we use for the strategic plan as well as our SRPs at the school site. And we continue through page four through eight. Thank you, Mrs. Cushionberry. Thank you. We have, we pause right there. We have evidence of our primary goals. These goals have been shared with all the school sites and personnel within the district. Within our division, we utilize these goals as a point of reference. And these will be the goals that once again will be reviewed at the mid-year review this year. If we continue. This share shows you the school renewal plan, the process within GEMS. It actually provides a record of indicating the communications from the state all up through the superintendent's approval. Next page, please. This is a communication in showing support of how we review and the feedback from the state on school renewal plans. I'd like for us to also pause and recognize that before our school renewal plans are sent to the state in GEMS, they are detailed and reviewed by personnel within Instructional Services Division. In the past, that was conducted by Carmen Dillard. Last year, she did a predominant amount of that. Prior to Carmen doing it alone, it was Jerry Henderson and Carmen. And now, as we turn to page new personnel within ISD, those responsibilities have landed amongst Karen McKinsey for secondary and Nicholas Flowers for elementary. If you could proceed, please. Thank you. At this point, I'm from page nine to 19, I think it's very important that we note that as we're looking at programs, one of the overarching items to identify a program evaluation is really to look at our report card system. The upcoming pages show information that was shared at a Hilton Head Board of Education meeting recently conducted. Daniel Fallon, I'm going to ask you if you want to go through these next few 10 pages, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. So as, as Dr. Stratus mentioned, you know, when we're looking at a program, auditor program review, we do have to start at the high level. So one thing that we have a benefit of in South Carolina was we have a relatively comprehensive report card system. So this presentation was given back at Hilton Head at a board meeting. So I'm not going to go through all 10 slides in detail, but the, the benefit of the report card, at least even with the year of COVID, we have grades from grade three, we have ELA, math, science, social studies covered through grade eight. We have, and of course exams. So we look at English one, Algebra one, US History Biology. That was transitioned over to English two for the accountability measure. We look at a large population of Beaufort County with the English language learners. So we progress towards proficiency. And then the culminating measure still exists annually. We had the graduation rate. So, so not to go in depth through the next 10, because I know we have a very heavy PE or OE. But just to see that, you know, we did look at graduation rate, how we compare to the state. How are we doing? The Canary and the Coal Mine. We look at all the assessment data as it goes through grades three through eight. And we looked at that broken down by cluster. So we could see any types of trends or patterns happening. Of course, we don't have a longitudinal because we lost 2020 with testing with COVID. But it's, it was a, it was a litmus test to see how the district did health-wise during the pandemic, during the academic year. And that was just a recap very quickly of what was already presented at a board meeting. But the level of detail and the level of work we do annually, when it does look at Beaufort County as a system as a whole, before we even start looking at those individual programs or those individual components being done at schools. And Robin, that takes us through, I think, slide 20 is all of that, that recap of that, that presentation.
It'd technically be page 20, Mrs. Cushionberry.
And that's, yep. And as Robin slides through, don't forget that the 2020 report, 2021 report card was the first time Beaufort County was above the state, just remember. And all the measured metrics that were released for the report card. So health-wise, we did fairly well during that academic year.
So on page 20 starts program reviews with instructional programs. If you proceed to the next page. We're starting with literacy development as an academic priority. If we could pause, this is pre-kindergarten. I just want to do a confirmation. Ashley Hutchinson, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Hi, Ashley. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Are you pulling this up on your phone? Are you, are you able to Zoom as well?
Yeah, I can look at what I, what we're looking at, yes.
Perfect. So is it possible, Ashley, if I could ask if you can give a few quick pointers to our board members?
Sure. If you just look at pre-kindergarten, we're looking at the readiness assessment. So this is our teaching strategies goal assessment system for pre-kindergarten. It's also the state required readiness assessment system. So we have the choice of three. This is one of the three that we have used in collaboration with the state as well as our local head start to ensure we are tracking children's birth through kindergarten or through pre-kindergarten. The state does require that we look at this at the first 45 days and the last 45 days. But Beaufort County also does a winter checkpoint. So we do it three times a year as a trimester, on a trimester basis. Can you scroll up just a little? Thank you. Keep going up just a little bit more.
It's the second page.
The second page, yes. So if you look at the second page, this is our data from the fall checkpoint. So from August until about the 45th day was around August 15th. You can look and see and see where our children are meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, or are right now at below expectations. As you see, it's an ongoing progress monitoring tool. So you'll see children progress throughout the school year with the three checkpoints.
So Ashley, we could also make note at this point as well that we recognize that the students involved in our pre-K are cut off at what percentile?
Right now, the district has set the cutoff. So children are qualifying for pre-kindergarten that fall below the 50th percentile developmentally and/or have enough risk factors that contribute to their overall growth and development. So there's two actual ways, but 50th percentile, below the 50th percentile is our cutoff.
Ashley, thank you very much. I appreciate. I know you're in the car with Melissa, who may not be able to look at a screen. So if she, she could listen and every now and then give me a hmm or a huh, I would appreciate it. Alright, the next item for literacy development, I'd like to share is a scholastic literacy program evaluation. This is a summary sheet that was prepared by Melissa Murray. But what I think is key, if we go to the next page is Mrs. Cushionberry. Thank you. If we pause right here. I'd like us to recognize that scholastic literacy was underwent a significant audit, a curriculum audit that was, the state had us walk through. This is the curriculum tool, the rubric for evaluating reading and language arts. That was utilized by a team here in Beaufort. If we go to the next page, please. 26. This just gives a quick note from the research group. And cites. If we go to page 27, this is where the process results for the literacy audit was conducted. We had representatives, if you pause just a second on the first column, I'm pointing as if you could see me in a classroom, so I apologize, identifies the schools who, thank you, Mrs. Cushionberry, schools who participated within the audit. It gives you the scores or their approval within the respective areas that you see on the first criteria, print concepts, phonological awareness, phonemic awareness. If we scroll up to the next. Fluency and phonics. And if we go to the last table, thank you. This gives the overall scores. And then the forthcoming pages really are provided because they're at the core of the scholastic literacy. And these are instructional practices that our teachers and instructional coaches are trained at. But this is within scholastic literacy itself. So I wanted, wanted us to recognize that we are in alignment with instructional delivery practices. And that was part of, part of the review. That goes through page 31. Melissa Murray, if you're, are you online?
Yes, we were able to log back in. So I'm online now.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to check if there's anything that Mrs. Murray would like to add regarding the audit for scholastic literacy?
So I apologize because I did miss, we dropped the call. So we checked back in. So he might have already said this. However, we did the initial audit using the REL resource through the State Department of Ed. And we had, you could see from the sheets that we use a variety of our schools that would be implementing in the future. So it received a rating from a collaborative rating. And then we also use the feedback to help drive implementation.
Melissa, greatly appreciated. Would you not be in here? We were absolutely aligned. Thank you. So as, and I know you're driving, so I'm gonna, unless you gave the steering wheel to Ashley, and I don't want to even think that. But pages 32, 33, and 34 are executive summaries. On iReady, Reading Plus. And if we could pause at page 34, just to give note that as schools have been developed instructional models, and Melissa, for you to know, recognize this is the model provided by Tracy Sands that was reviewed by yourself and myself.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted our, our board members to recognize that as schools are developing approaches that they want to be utilized at their schools, we are part of that process as well. It is reviewed and given a hay or nay or areas of improvement as well. This was provided to us through Beaufort Middle School upon Principal Grant and their instructional coach, Tracy Sands. I'd like to give kudos to them. With that, Mrs. Cushionberry, we can go to page 35, where we start accelerated courses. And I will be asking Daniel to come back at, these are his data tables and his executive summary.
Good afternoon again. I will take a little bit more time to discuss this, just because this information, some of this information has not yet been presented to the board. But the, the two programs of, of analysis in this executive summary are Advanced Placement and International Baccalaureate. So what we see is coming out of the 2021 testing. Beaufort County is our advanced placement. We did see an increase in the number of students taking advanced placement exams. So up roughly 41 students between 20 and 2021, while maintaining a 61% passage rate from the prior year. We did see an increase in capstone diplomas as well, from 23 to 35 students earning that capstone diploma. And 2021, 22 school year, Beaufort County is offering 29 AP courses, split between semester one and semester two. And then you see there, just quickly, the distribution of our current enrollment. So that's one thing we always do during the school year, prior to any type of exam, data being released over the summer and the next fall. As we just look and see the enrollment. So 956 students in 2021 took the exam right now currently enrolled or to be enrolled in semester two. There's 957 students. So we're looking at holding around the same number of students in advanced placement for the 22 school year, for the spring testing. When we look at IB, of course, that's just Hilton Head High School numbers. So if you see the numbers are lower, it's just one school. We did see a slight decrease in the number of students testing between 20 and 21 for the exams, down to 135 students from 176 the year prior. But we did increase the percentage of the passage rate from 72 to 89% passage of those exams. And then we also saw an increase in the diplomas awarded. So 25 students earned the IB diploma at the end of their enrollment versus 22 and 2020 school year. versus 22 and the 2020 school year. Right now, Beaufort County offers 26 IB courses between the two semesters. And there are 129 total students enrolled. The following data tables go through in depth by school enrollments. So you see the breakdown of of demographic information, whether or not the students are multilingual. Or are students with disabilities? You see that for all AP and that's percentage and the encounter of students taking at least one AP or IB course. So there are multiple students taking multiple courses. We also go through the the results. Robin, if you keep sliding on down a little bit. So we go through the results. So the first one is the advanced placement. Those are the 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 one, the header all the way to the left is off, but those are the actual advanced awards for advanced placement. So whether or not they get two or three tests, the headers on the left are off, but we see an increase and we see in number, and we do also see an increase in the percentage of those advanced honors. Continuing through, we have data tables going all the way back to 2006. So it's a level of longitudinal data that we keep and analyze. The number of students taking AP exams, we see the number of tests taken. Student scoring three or higher on the exam. As we continue through, we get to look at the percent of student scoring as well as the advanced placement tests with three plus. And then the final is the percent of advanced placement tests with a three or higher. You're fine, Robin. You can keep going. I know I'm talking quickly. And then we get into IB. So we see the same type of longitudinal when we're looking at the IB number of tests taken over the years that, of course, has changed a little. We went from having one school to two schools and then back to one school. But we see growth in these IB tests taken. And we see that flattening out here the last two, three years of the number of students. Continuing on, we look at the diplomas attempted versus diplomas awarded. So some of the data is missing. I'm sorry, I was actually still in high school in 1998, so I don't have that data. I couldn't go back that far. But I try to keep it as long as I can from the data that's readily available to me. So we see the number of kids going for the diploma. So Robin, if you scroll down just a little bit in 2021, I believe is 28 students. So 28 students were in the diploma track. And then 25 students earned the diploma. And then we continue on with data that we have readily available. The worldwide data has become a little more scarce to find. But we do get the state and the Hilton Head School data. So we can see a great improvement rebounding from 2020 for that percent passage. You know, we're in the the low 80s in 2019, 2020. We did see a little bit of a decline, but we see the improvement again back in 2021. That does it for the advanced placement and international baccalaureate program overview, the review.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Karen Gilbert, our director for career technical education. Mrs. Gilbert.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board Members. Thank you and Dr. Stratus for including career and technical education as part of this overall how are we evaluating programs and the process for their effectiveness? So you have in the executive summary, the same lens that we look at as far as usage, impact, progress, and ongoing. All of these, this is the process that we use for our career and tech ed programs. If you need any artifacts, we can back that up with what's in in here and beyond. So in the first part, with career and tech ed, we're very much driven by federal and state requirements. So you have actually the definition of what is a CTE program under our federal is called Perkins five authorization or legislation. And and then what do they look at and what do we have to do for each quarterly and annual reporting to the state? So the first thing that we do that we report to the state annually is obviously usage. And that is through CTE enrollments by course, by school, and by teacher, because they also look at licensure for those particular career and tech head content areas. That data, we have a process in place that we have fine tuned over the years to make sure that it is accurate and we work well with Mr. Fallon's team. And at the in May and June of each year, the state extracts that data. And then that is how it's disaggregated and reported on to the feds and then sent back to us for verification. So that's just one area of utilization while we're doing it ongoing through master scheduling enrollments by program area and pathway. It's also being reported to the state per their requirements. Other areas as far as accountability are concerned for usage would be how are our students doing who start with the cohort? And do they graduate on time? That's tracked separately through the federal indicators as well. Also, we have to track six months later, those students who completed a program slash pathway. Were they in school in some type of post-secondary? Or were they in working and gainful employee in a related area or and or were they in the military? So we have to utilize that data as well to see if we're having effective programs. Next slide, please. Another area that we look at is as far as impact is huge. In 2019 and 20 as part of the federal requirements, every school district and career center was joined with a state designated region. We're with Jasper Hampton and Colliton to conduct a what's called a comprehensive local needs assessment. And I have the the data for that that we can provide, but it's an excellent tool that again gets down into what are we doing and offering that's meeting six key areas? Evaluation of labor market data, student performance, description of the CTE programs as far as size and scope. Evaluation of the programs where we use a college and career readiness. Number five is huge. We have to report on how are we doing with our recruitment, retention and training for our CTE licensed teachers? And then number six, how are we making sure that we're providing equitable outreach for all students in special populations areas? And then all of that is through the lens of how are we progressing to meet the college and career readiness indicators? I'm glad a few years ago that the state decided to include career readiness as part of that South Carolina report card. So we have set each year to meet the benchmark goal of a 5% increase in career and tech ed completers with an industry credential. Work-based learning as well as a career readiness, the ASVAB students successfully meeting the cutoff score for that. And then for the win assessments, if they receive a silver or higher. And then finally, another great evaluation tool that we rely on as far as ongoing would be each year I conduct is what's called a quality review measure. Again, it's it's a requirement of the state and in the past it's been printed. But over the past few years, we've gone to more of an informal survey format. But basically it's asking in the spring of each year as we begin to build the budget for next year. Several questions that relate to how's your program going? What are going to be your needs for the upcoming school year? Several questions related to that. And then also I greatly rely on our advisory and business community partnerships. We meet twice a year, but often informally per program areas such as the healthcare and so on. And they are given updates as to how our programs are going by by pathway and by school. And then we solicit their feedback as to what we feel they feel like are pertinent areas that we need to continue focus on. So all of these areas are the key federal and state as well as our local indicators that we monitor regularly as we evaluate career ticket programs.
Mrs. Gilbert, thank you so much. I appreciate it. At this point, I'd like us to go to the next section, which is software review. So we can go to the next page, Mrs. Cushingberry. So if we look at software review, thank you. I appreciate it. Stage one is we look at it on an ongoing monitoring of usage and you're going to see that coming up within this section of this report. Stage two is we we've conducted a survey of practitioners. Stage three instructional service overview of reports and multiple data points. And then stage four is a budget review and collaboration with the with different B C S D divisions. And then obviously, stage five will be adoption. With that, we have our educational technology director, Colleen Bethan Varsky with us. Colleen.
Hi. So you described the the stages already there. So what you'll see on these next couple of slides is some examples of the utilization reports that we get. Since we're kind of hitting in a different part of the year, we don't have a full picture yet on a full semester. But we typically will grab that in the January time mark. But each software platform gives us some different information. So we look at utilization, minutes on task, those sorts of factors. But then if they have any impact reports, we ask for those as well. So we can review them as a team. So this first example is one that we get from DBQ. As you scroll down, you'll see some of the other software programs that we have, including and then that's also still DBQ. So as you can see, they some of us give us different information depending on what that piece of platform or what that platform offers. This is one from Dreambox. This is just a snapshot of the report because this is a rather long usage report. It doesn't buy individual students for us. So we can really see individually how students are growing, not just time on task, but also in their progress through the program. You can keep going through there.
And Colleen, just to say to share with the board members and names that the students are removed. That was just one slight snippet page.
Yeah.
Just to recognize. Yes. Thank you.
And then imagine learning, this is another example of the report we get from this is a much newer one. So we're just kind of learning how their reports will come to us and what pieces that we'll be able to pull from that. And we're just starting to see usage since training came a little later. But you can see that we can see, you know, that not only the time on task, but how many times they've accessed it and then growth throughout that as well graphed out for us. If you keep going through that's the Imagine Reading and then I'll tag to that is also Imagine Math coming up as well. So they are able to differentiate their product line for us as well through that program.
And this is for our multilingual students just to share with that as well. So it is a new curriculum that we started embedding this year.
No red ink is one of our ELA programs. So this is showing us, this is from last year's data report. So you can see from how we were able to utilize it last year before we went full implementation. So you can see the data that they can give to us and how it progresses through the year as there as well. Can you keep going? And then this is stage two. So the instructional survey that we give, the software survey that we give to our practitioners. So we want teacher feedback. We want to know how they feel about it and how they're seeing it utilized in the classroom and with their students. So we send this out to get their feedback on what they have and let their voice be heard. So if you scroll this through here, this was just a summary of our survey from last year, which is done prior to budget time. So we can have those conversations ahead of time. So we can get information on individual programs. We ask for each one that we have out there available and accessible for teachers and students and asking for their input as well. So you can keep scrolling through that. One of the biggest pieces that we take from here are things that they want us to consider. So we want them to let us know if there's something we're missing, something that they're either they found on their own or their school has really seen great progress from. So we asked for that feedback as well. And in this particular survey, if you scroll down a little bit more, there were two that really stood out to us during this year. And so we were able to take advantage of some of the extra funding that we were able to have so that we could help outfit teachers with the products that they needed and felt would be very valuable for their students. And as you scroll down even further, we have explicitly their reasonings as to why. So we're not just taking the input as I want it, but we really want to know what impact it would have for their classroom and for their teachers or for their students. So you can see their verbal feedback there as well. And then as you keep scrolling through there. Um, this was, if I'm in Dr. Shadef, you speak on that one.
Actually, I added this to also see one of the steps we took as we went from Naviance to score scores. We actually had a group of school counselors doing a review. That did create a significant shift in our budget and allowed us to purchase other items. The product that we're utilizing in replacement of Naviance is free to the school district. So I wanted to share that component to see that, yes, we we had input. This went through school counselors at length. So I we wanted to share that Naviance was a rather large contract through K through 12 with a significant amount of utilization. This item went through the same process that Colleen shared with you, very low usage in the lower grades. And we found this goes the state product. We will be able to provide same service for our students.
Important thing to mention in that stage three is that's really when we sit down to look at all the usage reports, the feedback from the teachers, and then look at the goals and needs that we see from the ISD meetings. So we're able to sit there and really make some informed decisions before we move into the next phase, which is stage four, and you can scroll down there. And that's to look at our budget and see what we do have already using those reports, what can go, what is doing to duplicate efforts potentially? Where we need to fit something in? And then we look at and organize it out. This is sort of how we keep track of what we do have accessible for our teachers. So we can have a glimpse and what's out there already. But it helps us to make those decisions when working with finance and the other departments in Beaufort County to make sure that we cross all of our Ts and dot our Is. And then go ahead.
Just to share, Colleen, that one of the things on this spreadsheet that your department does is keep ongoing notes for feedback. I didn't lend that, but it'll always allows that opportunity to go back and reference. So I just wanted to make noted.
And then once we have sort of that all laid out and we move into the adoption phase, then we have a document for our staff so they know what is available to them, how they can access it, what its intent is for and the pieces and parts that they have so that they know what they can pull from for their instruction. That is an internal document just because it has some things we can't make public with some usernames and passwords. So just.
I left the cover of that documented for evidence. And that at this point, this concludes the indicators to operational expectation 12.8.
Okay, let me see if people have questions. I have one question while we're on the the software. So everything that you showed us in the first step, let me go back to that. You know, there were some schools that had very low usage. Is this is that data prior to the adopt to it to the materials being adopted? Or is can you expound on that for me? I guess my question is, once we adopt something, is there an expectation that it's going to be used?
Yes. So is are you referencing this, Mrs. Robine, or the one prior that was up through October? No red ink?
Um, let me find it again. I'm sorry. I should have kept it up there. Utilization report DBQ stage one, like.
Mrs. Cushingberry, keep going back.
Uh, it's page 49. So like 1% in August, 1% of the students, but 13% and 11% activity doesn't sound like a lot to me.
So the DBQ one is just from this current year. So it is Joe. I'm in a room and I just hit the lights. I apologize.
This is up through this academic school year. So it's not a full year scope. So when you're looking at the August 2021, as we start the academic school year, the teachers were on, but they hadn't started utilizing with these students yet. Am I correct at that language? the teachers were on, but they hadn't started utilizing with these students yet. Am I correct at that language? Colleen.
Yes, yeah. So this was just at the beginning. This was one that we have just started implementation on. So this is an example of the reports that we can get from it. But it's not showing the full length of time yet. It's only showing the per month. So they were in these months, they were getting training and starting to to implement into their classrooms. So that's why we see the lower usage to start. Typically, we look for these, you know, after the first semester so that we know we have a good amount of time. And we will re-ask for that information if we can't pull it ourselves in the system so that we can have a better view before making any decisions.
Okay. And what does D B Q? What is that?
Document based question. So it's a it's a social statement. I think Karen McKenzie's on here as well. She's really, she's cheerleader for that one.
Mrs. McKenzie.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. Robine, for that question. D B Q is something that we've actually really started this year. We've used this sporadically in the past. And it is a historical analysis piece that so the students are given a question and they're provided primary and secondary documents to review. And then that leads to a writing prompt around that question, which is one of the reasons why we really wanted to hone in on that resource this year. There's a lot of evidence around the research to do with D B Q. So we're really excited. We train teachers in August and September. So that's why it was a little sporadic at the beginning.
So if I could just point out as well that the teacher utilization is rather high. If I'm correct, if you could with the software, the teachers are able to pull evidence based documents and they may not have changed their own system yet of opening for the students to read electronically. But it does appear that the teacher usage is high. So they're pulling from it instructionally, Karen.
Yes, Dr. Stratus. And another great thing about D B is we can pull just one document if that document aligns with our state standards and just use that document for students as well. We also have the capability to print these. So a lot of our students, teachers are working on things like annotation, which it's easier to do that if it's the written document. So a lot of teachers will just pull it up and print it for their students instead of having them do that online.
Okay. And one, thank you for that. And one other question. At what point do we draw conclusions about the impact of all of these programs that you've talked about on student achievement? When do we, when do we make that tie in?
So i- if I can go back to with a commentary made by Daniel. When reporting on the program evaluations, we're starting from the large picture down. So it's very hard to say that one program in particular is having a is making that difference to be very direct. Right? Because as you could see, we have a diverse amount of tools. And what I could share with that is so scholastic literacy is a primary tool utilized within thirteen of our schools. We also have a literacy block that is dependent on I Ready. And then if we add the layer in the elementary, Mrs. Robine, that we're also utilizing from grades three through five, reading plus as an after school intervention. It's hard to say which is going to be the most right now that what's having the the most impact at learning. But I have to say the combination of providing resources that are standards based, providing support for the educators, not only from the district, but by these vendors. We've actually have personnel within the schools from the companies working with our teachers that those are elements that lend for success.
Okay, thank you. So Mel or Angela, do you have any questions? Mr. Campbell, your hand is up.
Yeah, I have some of the same comments and questions. How do we really evaluate what we're doing? How do we know we're getting the bang for the buck? And the advanced placement courses, for example, or the N S or Baccalaureate program? Or even the content area here in the D B Q? How do we know? I mean, thirteen percent of students active, fifty nine percent of teachers are active. To me, that's a certain disconnect. And you explain it by saying the time of the year is not really, you know. But how do we know we need to stay with this? And, you know, or we need to put other things. I mean, layers and layers should have enough coverage where we don't have the the holes. But you know, I'm still, are we being as efficient as we can in evaluating so that we can move forward with the ones that work effectively? You know, cross referencing which ones work for which students. I'm not sure we're at that point yet. And I know we came out of the pandemic and all this, but I didn't hear anything in place for what we're gonna do to evaluate the I B program. I didn't look at those percentages. How much money are we spending in that? Is it worth it? That's that's what I want to know. Are we servicing enough students for that to be enough dollar allotted there as opposed to dollars allotted? Here, for example. I don't, I don't expect you to have those answers for me, but I expect that to be the the direction this this O E is sending us. I think that's where it should be sending us to. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So I I will pass comment to share that looking at, let's say, a D B Q, which is a new newly onboarded software. That's why we actually have the process in place that we do review utilization. We do get teacher impact. And we're finding that utilization is not happening as in the past Naviance, Rosetta Stone. Actually, there were three softwares that under the current administration, we have shifted from using subject to looking at the costs, right, or the R O I, return on investment. That it was I very much indicative that we were not getting return on investment very direct. Even on the reconstitution of our I Ready contract that originally was through special education only, we reconstituted that contract in order to get a much better price point because looking at utilization, but then looking at the cost factor tied to that. So I could share that right amongst the four softwares that this administration has reviewed significantly. And I think that's more of a fiscal review as well, not only the content and practice. And looking at this O E, it identifies content and practice. And I think I believe that's the lens that we utilized here versus a fiscal analysis that we do conduct. And in the time period that I've been here, I've readdressed four significant items for the district so that we can utilize funding in a better way. To look at a specific program, Mr. Campbell, as I B to say if it is or if it's not. I think we need to look at that broader to say, are we providing accelerated models for all opportunity within the district? And I have to say that we are. Cambridge is new. We are providing that within two high schools. A P Capstone is provided. Dual enrollment is highly provided. So we provide a diverse group of programs for students for opportunities for learning. So this may not be the platform to look at it fiscally. But from my seat to share that what we provide, I have to say as a district, we provide a great array of opportunities for students to meet state and national standards and even global. It would be very hard within my core to say that I B is not an effective program for the students. If we really look at what these students are probably attending colleges and what post secondary opportunities lie for them. But I I do understand your question, sir.
Yeah, I'm still, I mean, efficiency has to do more with what's available and whether the person who are using it is is benefiting from it. I want to know whether whether with all the programs we have, you know, are they effective enough to continue them over time and will it will it reach the goal? If these things are available for all level of students, will these students eventually reach the goals? Or do we need to look at something else? That's, that's, I mean, that's my concern. I don't know whether it's a proper place for the answer or not.
I I recognize your question, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if I, from my standpoint, from my viewpoint on this, Mel, by just by rereading the the O E, it's it's one of monitoring the programs to make sure that the programs are being regularly evaluated and modified.
What does that mean? I mean, I'm still asking the same question, Kathy. What does monitoring and evaluate means in this case? I mean, evaluate, how do we evaluate something? I mean, that's the question.
Okay, because I think if you look at the number of kids in the I B program who are graduating with I B diplomas.
I B is just the one that I know I'm familiar with. But I I don't want to point out that I B is one way or the other. I just want to know, uh, does the evaluation cross reference the dollar amount being spent relative to the district's budget? And the results, I I mean.
Yeah.
Unlimited amount of dollars. I'm sure we could find something that fits everybody every time with enough limited, you know, teacher student ratio. I mean, we could do it if we had enough dollars. The biggest problem is always how effective is the program relative to the dollars we're spending? So I, you know, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Gotcha. Okay, I I'm just thinking we have to look for an O E in finance. But.
Well, they can't answer that either unless they can cross reference the instruction. That's where I'm going with that. I mean, when we, when we, and I'm, I'm extending it to when we talk budget. We we have to talk budget from a programmatic standpoint so that we know that the programs we have in place are the best way to utilize the funds we are allotting in that direction. I mean, that's all I'm saying is there has to be some some cross references. And I could see Dr. Stratus saying, my thing is this, and I'm looking at what we're doing. But I I also know that our thing is bigger than that in terms of what we have to do with the dollars along with what Dr. Stratus, that the strategy is wishes wishes are for for optimum programs. We want, we want, we want optimum efficiency too.
So I I have a question. So is there an O E? What O E covers that? What Mr. Campbell is saying? There is none?
Well, I'm looking under the finance one now. I think you know. Yeah, I don't.
Not even in the A Rs, there's one A R that may be close to instructional alignment because I actually in in walking on this path, that is one of the things, Mrs. Middleton, that I looked at. You know, what else is there? You know, what type of program evaluation are we looking at? Right? If I stick to the language of twelve point eight, it is content and practices. But my curiosity went further, obviously. I I found one A R that may have some alignment to instruction and fiscal purpose. And I was not able to find an O E to that level.
And that could be something that's brought up to the policy committee. You know, if to to do that crosswalk, you know, that there'd be some O E that that when the budget's presented, there's a you know, when the budget's presented, we usually, there's a line item for software and we see the instructional software amounts. That's how we came to question. What was the foreign language one, Dr. Stratus, that we got that wasn't being used?
Rosetta Stone.
Yeah, Rosetta Stone, yeah.
How did we come to that? That's the question. How do we come to that?
Right.
Conclusion.
So it sounds like, it sounds like there needs to be an O E that, like you said, there's a crosswalk between this O E and there needs to be a finance.
Right. That's what I was just saying. Yeah.
Okay. So we can bring that up. This discussion has come up more than one time, but this is not the O E to address the finance piece.
Yeah, I'm sorry I brought it up, but I
No, it's legitimate.
I hate the disrespect. I mean, and disagree. But I think they all have to be addressed that way if we are going to expect this evaluation to be worth anything and.
But then I I have to share that at a fairness of operation of the team, you're asking for an evaluation model beyond the scope and level within the team as well. It would be the work of actually if someone was a program evaluator who also has a significant accounting perspective and is an educator. I I I don't mean disrespect to our board or to my team.
I'm not asking for all that, though. I don't care. I just want to know what was the plan for this to work? How many students was it planned to service? Is it effectively servicing those students? That's basically what I want to know. And I don't know if you need a, you know, a program evaluator to do that because you put this program in. You believed that it was gonna do what you wanted it to do. So I want to know when are we gonna be able to come to that determination, how long and how? And so we we can't expect a program evaluator to come back five years from now and evaluate what we've done. I expect you to be able to look at this and say, this is working and it's working well because I've got some results to show that it's working.
So I I just need a point of clarification, Mr. Campbell. And I I see Mr. Smith has his hand up and has been patient. But are we looking then for the proficiency rating within software itself?
And I don't know proficiency rating of software in terms of, in terms of servicing our children and its purpose.
So within, let's say, I Ready itself, it breaks our students up in tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. With fidelity of practice, the goal would be, it it may not be in this specific report, Mrs. Cushionberry, but within fidelity of practice, the goal is to decrease the amount of students in tier three, ultimately increase the amount of students in tier one, meaning proficient, right? And then in tier two, right, we want to see that we do it by color, green, yellow and and red. We we could see that over fidelity of practice, you know, at least ninety ninety minutes a week at a minimum, right? That we see that we see yellow growing, the green growing, and the red decreasing.
Yes.
So that that is an element that we could utilize and that I had made a commitment to the board when we onboarded I Ready that we will review them again annually. And we utilizing their three point diagnostics, which are administered in fall, winter, and then in later spring so that we could share that information of a full year of implementation as we go through this O E again. So yes, that that does exist one hundred percent. Even with reading plus with regard to fluency and comprehension practices and with Dreambox with computational skills, we have that capability to provide that type of data over a period of time. But last year, you know, no excuse to be made, but no, a few of these were pilots only last year. And and we could provide you deeper within the year one hundred percent. We do have that ability. But when I was looking at it by cost per student or R O I, it takes me into a different type of evaluation model. So I do apologize, sir.
Dr. Stratus, I think here, if you look at the scholastic literacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Under impact, you had the the you had, in a sense, an effectiveness rate.
Yeah. That's going to be earlier, I want to say, in in that presentation, Mrs. Cushionberry. I want to just get you to page.
How, in my mind, how we look at the effectiveness of these programs, are they doing the work with student achievement? I think I just pointed that out because that's just what. I think I just pointed that out because that's just what you were referencing, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's on page 24, it's there. In continuing that forward. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I thought, I thought you had forgotten about me. Yes, I too definitely do agree with a lot of, Mr. Campbell kind of said some of the stuff. So that's why I just let it go. He said some of the stuff that I say. I do think, however, that some of it should be measurable with, with, in, in some form of how, how we are, how we tie, we're tying to spending money and as well as to in terms of growth. How can we, how, how do we know that these programs are working? I mean, you know, it's great to have a, of, a, 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 a wide, a large menu, but how do we know that the menu is effective and that everything on, on, on the menu is actually working? You know, so I, I do have some, some concerns in, in, in term, in terms of that. But my, my question, like I said, as, as along, is along the lines of some of Mr. Campbell's comments in terms of measurement. But I, go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I apologize, Mrs. Smith, I really do. On page 24, Rob, and I do apologize, Mr. Smith.
That is just basically one of my main concerns, but I, I'll, I'll put in that. I'm just, I, I, I'm kind of wondering, that, that, that's why I was just wondering how will we be able to in terms of spending money and also how we'll be able to measure success? And to what degree will we be able to track it, let's say, from year to year? In 2010, I mean, 2021, we did this. 2022, we were here. You know, in terms of also in terms of moving the achievement gap as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about this OE?
Uh, that last part was a question. Well, will be, how will we be able to track it from year to year? Will, will, will there, and will there be any way for us to track it from year to year?
So, Mr. Smith, the answer to that is yes. The data that we, we collect from the utilization and the proficiency growth of students, they are stored historically as we cross from one year of utilization to the next. We don't let that data disappear. So we do have that capability of doing comparison from year to year. The answer to that, sir, is yes. Some of these items we brought forward, we don't have historical data on because they're new implementations within Beaufort County that trying to get us at work in meeting the academic and, and literacy and numeracy needs of our students. We, we do have that capability, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, so the question, 12.8 is what we just completed? What is the, how, how do you want to move forward with?
Join the meeting.
In terms of taking it to the board? Mel, Angela?
I think it should be taken. I mean, there, there's some other work that needs to be done. I think they covered this OE perfectly. The financial piece, the crosswalk with the financial piece, that is, that's another issue. That's another OE that needs to be developed, but I think.
I recommend we take it to the boards. I'll second that. I'll second that motion if that's a motion.
Are you putting it on consent agenda? That's what we've been doing.
I, I suppose so. I just think, you know, I suppose so. I just don't want us to become stagnant with, I mean, the OEs, the ARs and, forget it.
I, I think, yeah, okay. So the motion is to put 12.8 on consent agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Three oh, and then I do think, you know, a follow-up is to bring to the policy committee to recommend, make a recommendation to the policy committee to do that crosswalk.
Okay.
To add that component in there. I, I, I think that's, I agree with that. Okay, so next on the agenda is 12.2. Go ahead.
Good afternoon again. I apologize, Mrs. Robine. Is it possible, because I, Mrs. Murray and Ms. Hutchinson are driving in. I don't believe there'll be anything tied to this OE with them. I would just, to guide me, like, I'd rather have them turn off and focus on the road. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. I do would, would like to have, I believe Mr. Flowers is on board, Daniel and Ms. McKinsey. Colleen, I don't think I have anything on software here. And same thing, Mrs. Gilbert, if you want to stay on, I appreciate it. But if you, you know, if you have the other items you want to attend to. Okay, thank you.
And if I can just remind my committee members, 12.2 is to base instruction on academic standards that meet or exceed state and/or nationally recognized model standards. And when we did 12.3, which is make, making sure that everything's aligned with the South Carolina state standards, you know, to me, we kind of bled over into this one. I don't know if you all remember that, but. So go ahead, Dr. Stratos.
Thank you. And Mrs. Gilbert, I want to share, I am highlighting CTE in here as well. All right. So thank you again, Mrs. Robine and board members, and thank you for noting that there was a similarity between OE 12.2 and that of 12.3. We know that this is based instruction on academic standards to meet state, meet or exceed state national recognition. Okay. Page two, we have the superintendent's interpretation. Page three, we identified compliance statement and we start what are indicators. Again, we have the pattern of sharing the instructional, I apologize, administrative regulations. Then we start with evidence. I, I would, again, would like to cite that the alignment would be for county school district, Board of Education core beliefs, the district strategic plan and school renewal plan. So one item I left out in earlier, the area of connectivity on that graph are students, just to keep note of that. So page four and five has strategic plan, district data. Again, we should start from the big looking down. Page six, you'll be familiar, you've seen this, this, this starts with Rubicon, page, go ahead, Mrs. Cushionberry. This is, thank you, that's the summary of our data that you've seen at the prior 12.8. This is sharing the access to Rubicon that you are familiar with. Page six, thank you. Gives a descriptor right out of our board, our district website. Page seven through 16 should have listing of the courses that are available. That is a parent, the parent website, you see that there.
And what does the EM stand for, Dr. Stratos?
You know, you had asked it at the last meeting and Dr. Campbell had shared that. Colleen, I used, yeah, Colleen, are you still on? First column. Yes, ma'am, EM.
EM stands for Essential MAP, so that is the district level part of our writing.
So that it is within the mapping that was done for our curriculum writing teams because my brain keeps reverting to elementary middle. Thank you, Ms. Colleen. So we continue that, the, the courses there are identified up through page 16. Maybe you can come, continue to page 17, Mrs. Cushionberry. Thank you. This shows our state math. The next page will show the English standards. ELA, English Language Arts. Next page starts with gifted and talented. So these are pro- standards that we utilize and program within the school district. This right here shows, shares a training that we had. We had a consultant come in during the year last year, working with our teachers and principals in the area of gifted and talented. The second item on that is actually our GT handbook that Mr. Flowers is reworking and our career choice programs, which is at the heart of Mrs. Gilbert. This was our catalog from last year. If we go to the next page. This is a quick summary of elementary. Next page will have middle school. This reflects high school. And just for a quick note, board members, this coming year, our career tech, two of our programs are going to be redefined or two schools really are looking to add to programs. One is Beaufort Middle. The other one is Joseph Shanklin. We're reviewing their requests right now. Joseph Shanklin is having their SIC review the proposal this coming Thursday. And Beaufort Middle is completing the same process. And choice application for schools to complete information was, has been to develop through this division. And both those schools have completed those applications, but we have not gone forward until we have notes and feedback from their SICs. If you can continue, Mrs. Cushionberry. Career technical education. I strongly believe that is something to highlight because you can see from those prior pages, we have a diverse amount of programs for a school system of 22, 23,000 students. What we offer in opportunities is a stellar model here in public education. And I just want to push those kudos out to Mrs. Gilbert, who's still online with us. And I love your graphics. I had to take it from online, Karen. Yeah, it's a great, great, nice job. As we start with academic programs that we provide our students, they are diverse here. We have AP Capstone. And it gives you a little information of some of the required courses in order to earn a Capstone diploma. If you could slide down, Mrs. Cushionberry. This is data from earlier shared from Daniel Fallon. That hyperlink is actually apcentral.org. Really provides some great information in advanced placement. Another program that we have added here in Beaufort County is Cambridge ACE. This program is being offered at Battery Creek, May River, and Robert Smalls International has started a small initiative with pre-Ace program starting at sixth grade in a cohort model for students as they go from sixth to seventh to eighth grades. And we can have a direct feeder pattern into Battery Creek. We are looking for a middle school south of the Broad. This here identifies courses of enrollment. This is information out of Performance Matters. These are enrollment of students this, this year. Next slide. This here shows the International Baccalaureate Program that we service here in Beaufort County. We have PYP, MYP, and IB diploma. Feeder pattern is in Hilton Head. There is a strong amount of development happening. I have to share with Hilton Head Middle. The new administration there is working very hard at reconstituting. I meet bi-monthly with the IB coordinator there in order to help give some guidance and practice. And we have actually worked out a plan of action for the school. This here, map here gives you some information regarding where in different areas internationally that the International Baccalaureate Program is offered. This information has been shared with you. Again, if you go to IB.org, there's excessive amount of information supporting and showing how actually from IB to advanced placement in Cambridge, the opportunity of providing our students with coursework beyond the traditional model at Annie and Building, and that actually our career technical, technical education. Next page, please. And this is a continue of the courses. Mr. Fallon has shared this information. Diplomas. Dual enrollment information for this current academic year. I would like to share that for spring. We are putting back into place testing requirement of the Accuplacer. We had let that slide for the past, you know, earlier through COVID, only subject to giving our children opportunity or our young adults opportunity. But we don't want to see our students with Ds and Cs, so we are putting back the bar or the gateway level that we had had prior to COVID. On this page, it shows a little bit of shifting of our core practices, but yet providing students with extensive opportunities. One of the items that's came forward from our board is redefining a profile of a Beaufort graduate. Work has been done extensively on this. And one of the areas of building or acknowledging to learn is actually will be presented during the week, week of February, February 8th, 18th, 19th, and 20th in 2022. The next opportunity, we go further down, is a grant that our school board has acknowledged and supported is a DoDIA grant. Rethinking Mathematics Through Integration of Computer Science. I think it's important to bring that forward because it does put a competitive edge at building that capacity of our educators in the area of math as well as a computer sciences within our elementary and in our middle schools. You go ahead. This just gives, the next two slides just gives a quick reminder of this grant. And I think it's important to recognize that the DoDIA grant is significant, significant. If you could just pause a minute there, Mrs. Cushionberry, you know, as a military community, it's important that we also build and attract and maintain a quality education for our military families. The paragraph prior to this page was just a reminder of support for the Magnet Schools of America grant that we have, targeting seven schools within our system. What emphasis on cyber technology as well as medical. And then our district initiative in STEM. I think it's important that we recognize that. One of the areas that we are building as a school system is our STEM certi- STEM certification. I was going to say accreditation, so I had to stop and pause. And if you get the opportunity to have a look at instructional areas, I would highly recommend look at the Grand Challenges in Engineering because we're going to start the development of some instructional lessons that we could share with our schools in, in one of the 10 domains that is identified in that link. And then one of the items right here, I think we also have to recognize as our students perform and demonstrate high performance, that as a graduate, that senior scholar's banquet is one of the culminating, culminating activities for our top students in their class. These are the requirements. And this presentation gives a brief overview of some of the programs we offer, but the evidence that we have that goes beyond that of just the local class and that we offer global and international opportunities for our students.
Ms. Boatwright?
Hello, thank you. I, you know, I was thinking about this, and I'm not going to say anything about the IB program because I think everyone knows how I feel about the IB program. Except I think it's a tremendous opportunity to encourage more kids to go into it. But looking at like school choice, one thing that I think is problematic is just we don't have that much school choice, at least south of the Broad, because of capacity issues. And I do think that, you know, looking at where things are heading, I think in education and in colleges, it's getting more specialized in high school. So if a kid wants to focus on the arts, you know, Charleston has magnet schools. If a child wants to focus on culinary skills, there should be a. a school that has a really strong culinary program that they could transfer into. If a child is college bound, they should be able to take IB or AP Capstone because that's going to prepare them for a four-year college. And so one of my concerns is we have these programs and we're talking about utilization and we're talking about how much money we spend and how many kids are using it. We're really restricting it because we don't have school choice south abroad. And it's something that I've dealt with personally, and I know a lot of people in Bluffton that might be interested in doing IB. I know of a lot of kids at Hilton Head that might look to go out for fine arts, but they can't because of the lack of school choice. So is there any way as we look at these programs that we can figure out some more flexibility with school choice?
So that again falls outside of the merry world. It falls into actually our school capacity numbers to look at the enrollment capability. And I think that's part of the question that we're looking at. I know this past year, Mrs. Boatwright, we were able to lend some flexibility by program, right? That was the language we use to enable additional enrollment to Hilton Head High School. And we work closely with the principal there. But one, one of the items that we have to keep in mind, it's a capacity within our schools. Yeah. So I, there's a, you know, I, I think it would do well to have a conversation. Maybe if I could recommend a workshop, having conversation, not only with ISD. And I would love for Mrs. Gilbert to be part, but also, you know, finance as well. And looking, how can we create more opportunities? Operations would have to be at the table as well. Going forward so that we can either enlarge our schools to provide more career technical education. And is there a need? And that's, you know, to have more the increase of international baccalaureate, if you, you know, looking outside of just a Hilton Head corridor.
Well, and I know it's not a merry world specific situation, but I do think, you know, if instructional services is designing these great programs. And then we're evaluating the utilization of those programs. And there are kids, and I'm not talking about IB, like I know there are a lot of kids who would love to do more technology. But our two technology grants are Whale Branch and Buford High, which, you know, is a long drive for my constituents, and it's a long drive for Bluffton constituents as well. It's not just an IB thing. We've got these great programs. And if there's a kid who knows that they want to be in a band, they know that they want to be, you know, in the IB program or they want to do technology. We can't replicate this, I don't think, in every single school with the same fidelity. So to me, as you're designing these programs, I think it's just jet fuel for their utilization if the kids that want to do that have those options. So I think you definitely have to be part of the conversation.
I, I recognize. I appreciate that, ma'am. And it would be a team to be part of it because I think it's, they have another lens of insight as well. Especially on Mrs. Gilbert's, you know, team.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I kind of, kind of thinking like, like, as Boatwright in terms of. But I don't know, I think maybe we have too many choices. So, but I think we can utilize those IGP's at an earlier time to help us help direct us in the needs of the future. I mean, seventh and eighth graders are doing IGP's. At least preliminaries, am I not right in this?
Yeah, the eighth graders do have IGP's that are completed.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, we, we ought to look at, at their choices and try to cross-reference them as much as we can and decide what programs we may need to expand and get out of the box with, and then what programs that might you know, not be, you know, maybe we can encourage more, more participation in some of the other programs, but I mean, all that's a that's, that's, that's an effort that I think we ought to undertake. What children have to choose from? How are they choosing what they're choosing? And then make sure that we're kind of giving them what they, what they select within our resources, of course. And we don't have, you know, that's the other element. And, and yes, that's the strategy is right. We need to have a a session on that and a discussion on that and where we're going. Well, we want to build new schools with a new referendum. And we don't have a plan on what's going to be needed.
It, it would be wonderful if we had a and I do like Aces a lot, but you know, there's a partnership there. But at some point, maybe discussing, do we really need to have a, a career technical in education center south abroad that really lends more opportunities that is Buford County's. So, Mr. Campbell, I am going to and it'll be prior data to look at, but I will speak to Mrs. Henderson. Because I know we can break down IGP by grade level. I'm going to find out we could break it down by interest level. It would be something good to look at. So I made note of that.
To see where, where we're going, what the kids are thinking. The other part of it, are they thinking futuristic, you know, enough as, as we are as educators or vice versa? Are we, are we still, you know, talking about home economics and agriculture when they're thinking, you know, space shadows and other things? So all that's a part of the the driving force that we need to continually look at that data and talk about fidelity with fidelity. Just put things down. We're not reading the interest. I think it'd make the job a lot easier than to get them going where the, where the interests are. Anyhow, I agree. Thank you.
At this point, I think the, if I can focus us back on the statement of twelve point two. It was base instruction on academic standards that meet or exceed state and or nationally recognized standards. Models. To me, I, I think that this has the stock, this information presented shows that we meet it now. Is it, you know, the question is, is it available to everyone? You know, I think that's kind of how the the Capstone came to one place and the Cambridge came to another to kind of spread those things. And I think that's a bigger picture. But personally, I feel twelve two, what's been presented that we do offer some nationally, you know, some programs that are aligned with national standards. And to me, that's what twelve point two says.
Madam Chair, I'm, yes. I move that we present this to the board. Operation, the OE twelve point two to the board.
All right, do I have a second? Okay, I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay.
To be put on consent agenda or no?
Yes, I don't see.
And then we have, okay, all in favor? Aye, aye. That's three oh to place that on consent agenda. So we have one more item that I'd really like to get through. And I recognize it's six o'clock.
So Madam Chair, before we move on, can we make sure that this, what Mr. Campbell was just discussing? That that is a part of a board work session?
Yes, I, I think that when we come up, when we come to future topics, you know, we have, somebody has to bring that up. So you know, craft a way to say it.
I'll leave that up to Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
I'm not very good at crafting things.
Well, we'll, we'll, we can talk about that again. I think I
Let's move, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get you.
Okay, so thirteen point seven. Thirteen point seven is the discipline. This is one that was brought back from before. Because we were looking for how it was going to be measured, not just, or some data behind it, I believe. Not just what was offered, if I remember correctly. So, Dr. Stratos?
You're muted.
Mrs. Cushionberry, good. Thank you for letting me know. At our last presentation, there was commentary regarding on thirteen point seven on how this is getting down to the direct schools and individual classroom. So with that, proceeded to go ahead and have a survey sent and shared to all of our schools. So we can continue within the presentation to item E, school site intervention. Right here, thank you. So this is where it started to share, like this is Robert Smalls International Academy. This is part of their school-wide behavior intervention program. And it was sharing information and data of the results. Their office referrals. Sharing information from two thousand and nineteen. And they were one of the schools that is put into place, if you can continue. A stronger positive in school intervention program. If you can go to the next page. So this starts the information from a survey that went out to each of our schools. Continue, Mrs. Cushionberry, thank you. We pause right here. This is the amount of total responses. There were thirty-one responses. And you can see at the very top, if you go to the next slide three. It gives the question. And it was a very simple question. Does your school have a unique discipline model that is embedded in your school's daily operation? That was the question I interpreted from Mr. Campbell, trying to get, go deeper and getting information from our school sites versus the cursory interventions provided by the district. The next slide, slide four, and if you said they are color-coded, blue is elementary. Red is middle. Yellow is high school. I'm sorry, K eight. Green is high school. That'd be slide six, Mrs. Cushionberry. So we see on slide seven. It starts defining some of the programs that schools had identified, and I thought it was important to share what PBIS is. Where it comes from. Because many of the schools have a positive intervention program that they utilize, and it is actually based on positive reinforcement out of the Individuals with Disabilities Disability Act of nineteen ninety-seven. And it is not a punitive model, but a positive model or no different than those of us who have been in the classroom, right? Specific academic praise. Mary, you did a great job at constructing that paragraph today. Can we also look at this in the future, right? State student's name, state what the action was, and state an alternative. If we can go to the next slide, please, slide eight. It shares that PBIS, the goal is creating a better, more positive environment. And again, I shared that it was important to take a pause because I found a large amount of our schools utilize PBIS in their schools. And I know it is a district initiative. But schools have actually made it a little more signature for themselves. Another area that you'll see is restorative justice. That is slide nine. This gives you a brief definition. And what this is about is really working on the opportunity that, once again, Mary, was it the best opportunity you, you took to kick that locker, right? But taking the time to help the students resolve the conflict. Not just us being reactionary and giving a consequence. If we can go to slide ten. I think this is key. Because again, the restorative justice practice as well as PBIS basically builds upon having a positive school environment. What is unique in this language is, and this definition is a language of self-control. Slide eleven starts now to share with you some of the programs that these schools have chosen at the elementary, PBIS, respect, responsive classrooms, PBIS K one and, and a house system. To go through that basically is respect is being able to respect oneself, and there'll be a little more definitive coming up. Responsive classroom where the educator actually is being responsive to the needs and the students. I could say through many of the instructional reviews that I've been conducting. You could see that's this predominantly in elementary, that the teacher stops, pauses, takes a moment, has that conversation with Mary, redirects Mary, helps Mary recognize, hey, we're going to get through this together. Let's get this done, and then we could do this next. All right. If we go to slide twelve. This gives a little more description from the schools themselves. You see the breakdown of respect of the responsibility, empathy, self-discipline. Some schools do morning meetings. Slide thirteen continues with elementary. If we go to slide fourteen, middle school. Again, they're quick narratives of what these initiatives that the schools are doing. Slide thirteen, I apologize, fifteen identifies a K eight. And slide sixteen is high school. The third bullet of no contact agreement basically is what I used to share, you know, a cease and desist practice amongst here. It's much, it's much nicer language to say using no contact. But I want to highlight slide seventeen. And this is going to be a, a first for a few of our schools, and it's called Live School. Ladies Island Middle School had a slight pilot that we have gone ahead to support them where it's a point system. If we go to the next slide, this is Cushionberry. And it's a live behavior management point system. It's rather inexpensive. They are just onboarding it. They had a slight, they had a small pilot. I sat with the principal, opportunity to give support for the program. So they'll be one of our first schools doing full implementation. And what's nice, it has a teacher quick start in the classroom. We go to the next slide, it shows a parent guide accessibility on slide nineteen. Slide twenty allows students to have an account. So I wanted you to just recognize it goes teacher, parent, student. And again, they're just acquiring this. They had a pilot. I met, I met with Dr. Brown. So we're going to be going ahead and supporting them. And if we go to the next item, Alpha F, you're familiar with Young Men of Distinction. That was a model utilized for identifying students. We have not, this is what's implemented last year. We have not rolled into that yet this year. Student Services is now within a different department. So going forward, Student Services is identified through Dr. White. So we will be in support of any additional initiatives that she'd like to bring forward to the table. So this brings forward the addition of the classroom scope and school scope to Operation Expectation thirteen point seven.
Okay. I think you answered a lot of my questions that I had. And I wanted to know what, what they're doing, what the school said. And those are some of the answers. And those are some of the answers.
And Mr. Campbell, if I could say, I appreciate that question because it really gives some validation back to the schools asking them. And going a little deeper and, you know, having some phone calls with numerous principals. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I, oh, sorry. I'd just like to say I'd be interested in seeing some results of the live school program. I'm sure there's a baseline of behaviors that are being addressed or a specific target behavior. And see what kind of impact that program has on that.
I do have some of that information to share at the point of having conversation, the amount of referrals that they were processing. And that could be looked at again, you know, like at springtime. That could be a suggestion that we could bring forward. So yes, I could ask for that.
Yeah, I just think that's, that's the kind of thing when we look at our programs effective. What's working effectively and we could gather some there. Okay, Ms. Middleton, do you have any questions about that one?
I do not.
Okay, do I have a motion to move this one forward to the consent agenda?
Yeah, I move that we move a, the presidency of a 13.7 to the consent agenda.
I second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, three oh. Okay, it is almost 6:15. We have two items left on today's agenda. They are 14.3 and 14.4. I will defer to the team as to whether you want to move them to our next meeting time. 14.3 is ensure that confidential student info is properly used and protected. That's all the FERPA stuff that was uploaded before. And 14.4, equal educational opportunities. So, what do you say, folks?
I don't have a, I don't have a care. Whatever you guys decide. I'll go either way, postpone it till the next time or-
Well, Dr. Stratos, do you think 14, the FERPA one's pretty straightforward?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
You want to just run through that one? And I hope, you know, I think that probably the committee members have, did have time to look through that one. So why don't we, why don't we tackle 14.3, the FERPA one, and then we'll call it a day?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mrs. Cushionberry. Appreciate it. So as Mrs. Robine had shared, board members. The FERPA or the confidentiality component, component to this Operation Expectation is rather much straightforward. Predominant amount of it falls within administrative regulations as well as our licensing. Either as an administrator, educator, or as a classified person, it would be under our policy and practices. So that it goes through page three. Page four provides information and resources that are directly from our links from the district. Updating policy. It shows the district's history of updating information. If we look on to page five, Family Education Rights Privacy Act. This is actually within our schools, we are required to have this posted. If we look to page six. Our training also provides the exemption guidelines. And I apologize for the size of the text. It's not your eyes. Page seven. Again, I'm sharing with you required training. If you see, that is our Safe Schools Training. And I would stop the presentation at that point because the next two items, based on the nondiscriminatory practice, those two pieces of evidence fall into the next OE. So this is the clean part of component for FERPA. And basically, it is mostly tied to district policy, administrative regulations, and our licensing.
Okay, does anybody have a a motion regarding 14.3, ensure that all confidential student information is properly used and protected?
I move that we present 14.3 to the board as evidence provided.
I second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. That's three oh. Okay. Thank you all very much for your indulgence today and sticking with us. As usual, we always have good conversations. I feel we brought up a couple of points that we think need to be brought forward to policy. One point to policy committee and another as a suggestion for a work session. So we'll, you know, follow through on that. So according to my notes, now we will have, on our next agenda, we'll have to have 14.4, 12.4. And then we had two that were due in December, 12/11 and 12/12. One's 12/11's textbooks, adoption of textbooks and instructional material. I feel like we've gone over that one before.
We have.
So, Mel, sorry.
I thought that was a special.
That was a special, that was a special one, but this is just the procedure for it. So I think that because we already did that special one, we talked a little bit about the procedure, right? So that one should go fairly quickly. You know, I can never, I'm not really good at guessing how fast you're going to go. So we do need a meeting in December. Robin is-
Technically, your, technically, your meeting would have been the 23rd. So I was going to suggest that you move it to the 21st or the 22nd. The 22nd is the last workday for the district office. So you could meet the 21st or the 22nd.
I used to say the 21st. You don't want to, that's Tuesday, the 21st?
Tuesday, the 21st.
Is that, Mel, does that work for you?
I'll make it work.
Angela, that works for me.
Okay, and Dr. Stratos is, well, I'm going to see. Angela, what's the earliest you can meet?
4:30.
4:30, okay. That's early.
Yes, that's 30 minutes before I get off from work.
Yeah, okay. Oh, got it. Yeah, okay. All right, so 4:30 on the 21st, Dr. Stratos, does that work for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you probably going to be having a party and you're going to have to miss it? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the last motion is, is just to, it doesn't go on consent because the whole OE is not completed yet, correct? This is just-
We're putting them on consent as we go. Yeah, so it should be consent, yeah.
So, Mrs. Cushionberry, I'm going to correct that cover page just to reflect that one item. I made note of that, so I would provide that to you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the motion is to, to put OE 14.3 and move it to the consent agenda?
Yes. Is there any way we could meet on the Monday, the 20th, instead of Tuesday, the 21st?
On Monday, the 20th, agenda settings at four, and the ad hoc bluffing group is meeting at 5:30.
Okay, and Angela was shaking her head, so.
Right.
Okay, so the 21st at 4:30 is our last meeting for the year.
All right, bring its Christmas cheers.
All right.
Mrs. Robine?
Yes.
If I could just share for a point of clarification, with OE 12/11, 12/12.
Yes.
They are tied to the textbook presentation that we had done with that special adoption. That would be providing the legal as well as the district procedural?
Yes, that's what they, when I read them, that's what it sounds like. 12.12 does say the procedure for reviewing materials by a parent request. Did we talk about that before?
No, we didn't, but that will be, that is actually within our requirement in an administrative regulation.
That's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, and 12.11 is just select textbooks and instructional materials.
It is.
Effectively measure, yeah.
Yep, and that's report, that is the report card processing as well as progress reports and grading practices in state law. So I will make sure those guidelines are in and pull up information from faculty handbook so we have it from the school sites.
Well, I'm wondering if this one should be later, like after we have winter map. If we want to look at progress and stuff. Because it says effectively measure each student's progress toward achieving or exceeding the standards. To me, that's going to be one where we'd want to be looking at student data, right?
I agree, yes. So, and we won't be completed with map data because we extended the window for high schools because we are requiring English one and English two to map. And we didn't want to interrupt with EOC testing. And we wanted to map the next cycle of kids, students, because at a four by four, you know, there'll be a new wave of students at the beginning of second semester. So they will not be done with map testing at the high school level. I want to give them at least the second week of January.
Well, why don't we move that one to February?
Which one is that?
12.4. Mel and Angela, what do you guys think? When you read that one, what do you think?
I don't have a recollection of it now. From what you're explaining, I suppose, I don't know if we actually need data. So I'm saying.
It depends on how we're going to measure student progress towards.
Yeah, it says effectively measure each student's progress toward achieving or exceeding the standards. So if you're just going to talk about the process, then I guess we don't need the data.
No, you could have all that. I mean, it's about how he's going to do, how, that'd be more practical steps that we're going to utilize, right? Also then, the specific children, this is a, this is a process that's a policy for doing it regardless of what the numbers show. Is that, am I on off what?
Yeah, I don't know. That's, you know, the first time, this is one of those things that I think we're learning a lot by reading these OEs and trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly what the intent is, I think.
Right.
I think this is general.
Process?
Process, yeah.
Okay, if it's processed, then we could still keep it on. It's what you described then, Dr. Stratos.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any other comments before we adjourn?
No, ma'am.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good one. Bye.